I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors meeting on Monday, October the 18th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. All rise. Pastor Tommy Shepherd, custodian of United States Church.
Thank you for the opportunity. Let's go to the Lord's Prayer. Almighty God, I stand before you tonight before this board and ask humbly that you pour out your Holy Spirit upon this place to direct and to guide, to give inspiration and hope for this county. Lord, be with each of the supervisors as they make decisions. Give them insight and wisdom, understanding, and a heart of charity. We give you praise for all that you do. In Christ's name I pray.
Mr. Kimbert, would you lead the whole nation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll remain standing, we'll have a moment of silence in recognition of the U.S. Military Servant here and abroad. Please remember our surest department and first responders. You may be seated. At this time, we'll go into regular session. I will need approval of the meeting agenda.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Go, workwise. Approval of the meeting minutes. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions on it? Call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Okay. Need a motion for the approval of bills, claims, and appropriations.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Then I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Forward, Miss Park. No. At this time, we have a presentation for Dr. Clyde Deluge with the Virginia Certification Supervisor. He'll come forward quick. Dr. Deluge.
Good evening, Miss Chairperson, members of the board, Administrator Hazelwood, county staff, and citizens. I'm Carrie Walker. I am the coordinator of programs and development at the Virginia Association of Counties, also known as BACO. To provide some background for you about BACO, if you're unfamiliar with us, we are an advocacy arm for our county staff and county leaders across the Commonwealth. We support you all through advocacy, educational programs, member services, and communication efforts. Thank you for making it possible for me to visit with you all today in this stunning part of our Commonwealth. This is my first visit to the area, and I can't wait to come back. We're here this evening because I'm presenting a certificate of completion to Vice Chair Clyde Deluge for completing the Virginia County Certified Supervisors Program. That program was designed in 2006 to enable our county leaders to learn a lot about leadership and the different aspects of leading in a county role, in an effort to enhance your decision-making and your leadership skills. We have over 100 graduates in the program as of this year, and we're being represented by over 40 counties so far. The course is a five-course program, and there are 65 hours of classroom instruction and 35 hours of homework throughout the course of the program. We would like to thank you, Vice Chair Deluge, for your participation in the program and through your exemplary contribution to the success of it. So on behalf of all of us from BACO, I would like to congratulate you on your new status as a graduate, and I would love it if someone could take our picture together as we stand here in celebration of this achievement.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I would just like to say this is a wonderful course, and anybody that could take it should. I mean, it's wonderful.
At this time, we'll have public comment. If you have not signed up for public comment and would like to do so, please do so. Go on to the next thing. We're not quite...
Let's go on and do the introduction of the new leadership cohort that's with us this
Julie Steele. Sherry Haysaloo. Grayson Lindberry. Please stand. Does that call your name? Michael Marshall. Paul Burnett. Sissy Harrow. Linda Buchanan. Stephen Walker. Stephen Jackson. Stephen Jackson, I'm sorry. Ms. Hazelwood, would you explain exactly what this leadership of Pappy County has done?
Sure. So they are just getting started. I was actually a part of this program myself, Ms. Shep. Enjoyed ourselves thoroughly, got to meet a lot of folks in the county and outside of the county, made a lot of networking connections, did a lot of exercises, and learned a lot about ourselves and the leadership and how we can all do better as leaders. We're very thankful to have you guys here tonight. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing the job of the county. Ms. Hazelwood, next.
Next, we have Dr. Martin, acting superintendent. I don't know if we have enough time when we can get started.
We're not going to have to send out for breakfast.
Well, it's already on order.
Okay. I'm passing out a packet. There will be a test. And it'll be truth-offs.
If you'll be fine, Mr. Corey and help pack my test.
Thank you. Of course. Thank you.
So you know how I feel about getting in the witness box. So I'm not a witness for the prosecution. So just let me say, the first piece all in here is, I'm back. And it's been two years, and I spent six months here, and I've been bragging about you all ever since because I think where I live and down in the valley, you know, there are people there that want to know, how do they do what they do in Patrick? And I'm going to talk a little bit about that when I get to the school system piece and test scores. Since day one, I'm on day 11, okay? But since day one, it's like I never left because I feel like I've worked with all of you. I've worked with the school board. I've worked with most of the teachers and the administrators. But I've done what I've called listening and learning tours, and I've spent time with every faculty except one. And that principal, the day I was supposed to go, got strep throat. I don't know if she was just scared that I was coming, but she just had strep throat. So we've rescheduled that. But I've asked everyone this question. What frustrates you about your job? Because, you know, you're doing a good job, but not that I can fix everything, but I'd like to know what kind of frustrates you. And I've had some interesting responses. One is, teachers are stressed because they're dealing not only with students in their class, but in many cases, they're having to prepare Zoom lessons as well. The other piece is, some of these kids, they've been out of school for 18 months. And overwhelmingly, I hear from teachers, we now have to teach the students to be students again, and then we can teach them to learn because they've been at home, and now we're teaching them, you know, those classroom etiquettes, raise your hand, you know, all those sorts of things. We're doing those again. So COVID certainly has presented many challenges to our school system. So I want to tell you what conversations I've had with teachers. You know, the mental piece for kids is very important. It's important for all of us. And COVID has affected our students in very different ways. We're beginning to see that they're stressed. But what we do see is, and I hear this from teachers, they come to a teacher that they know and that they trust. But I've heard from those teachers, can you provide us more mental health assistance? And I said, you know what? What's important is, the student has found you, you're listening, you care about them, but more importantly, they have to know that you love them, and they'll keep coming back to you just to talk. Listening and hearing, active hearing with COVID is 85% of the stress. And so we just, we encourage that with our teachers. So your packet is pretty thick, so let me tell you, and you'll have Jane to thank for this later, but that's coming up in just a minute. I provided for you, and your pages are numbered. After you get the report itself, on the bottom right-hand corner is page one, and these are the SOL and graduation rates for our district. And I want you to look just at the chart, and you'll see that Patrick County Schools, we are above the state average in every area except writing, and we are addressing that as we speak. We have programs to help kids with that. I will tell you that we are kind of the envy of all the school systems around us because our test scores are higher. So this is one of the questions that I get down in the valley. So how do they do it? And I said, well, here's a fact you probably need to know. 85% of the people that work in the school system graduated from Patrick County High School. Oh. Oh. And you get the look. I said, but that's a good thing because family's important, and every child has a name. We're not large enough that you don't get that sense of family when you walk into school, and the kids and the teachers, whether they have one in class or not, they know everybody. That is super important. So the culture of family, I think, has increased the test scores here because the kids feel safe, and they know everybody. The other thing is that our graduation rates, which really are tremendous, 96.76%, what that means is, those freshmen that started, 96% of them actually graduated. Now, well, what happened to the others? But those may move away, but we only count by names, those people that are moving forward and actually graduating. The other thing that I think is pretty significant, you know, Patrick County is considered possibly high poverty. So a lot of people think, well, you're high poverty, so the achievement cannot be very good if you're high poverty. So we just give you lots of money in other districts, and they throw money at poverty. Well, I'm here to tell you, you are in the top 10 of school districts out of 132 in Virginia that deal with high poverty and have high test scores. That is significant. And I keep telling people, and I'm on the Board of Supervisors, so I'm saying this to colleagues now, that doesn't mean you don't give them money, okay? What it does mean is, you demand that they hire the best teachers, and the teacher's the most important person in the school system. It's not superintendent, it's not school board, it's not our principal. The teacher is the one that can turn children around and do the marvelous things. So let's go back to COVID. So I'm planning to come back if I'm invited, November, December, but I think you need to know how COVID is working in our school system. So that's page two, and you can see the number of positive cases by school and the number that have been quarantined as of... We did this on October 13th, so that's when we kind of did a little, what I call dipstick, just was, how are we doing? So we are thinking about ways in which we can improve people getting vaccinated, and it's mandated that they wear masks in our schools. We believe that that has helped mitigate some of our issues. Students are required to wear their mask. They're also required to do this, which I thought was really kind of interesting. Before they go in a classroom, they're given sanitized wipe. They go to their desk, they wipe down their own desk. Now, you might think, I think that's a great idea, not only for COVID, but for colds and all sorts of stuff. So they're wiping down their own learning space before class starts. It's a great idea. At the high school, just so you know, because I thought that was kind of interesting, lunchtime, if you sit at a table, so we can do tracing, you have to sign that you're sitting at that table. You know, that's the best applause I've ever gotten. Just a big quack. Yeah. So that, so we are doing contact tracing, but we're also finding about contact tracing in the schools, we have great cameras, and when we find out that someone is ill, we're able to look at the cameras and find out who they've been in contact with. And that's how the principals are really able to do really valid contact tracing, not just saying, well, who have you been around? We're actually seeing who those students have been around. COVID revenues. Thank Jane. Okay. Jane asked a question today, which caused me to say, you know what? I think this would be good information for all of us to have. So I have put all of the backup documentation for all the GEAR grant, which is $102,000, and how we spent that money is on pages four through 10. The CARES Act, CARES 1, $559,000, pages 11 through 13. CARES 2, and it goes on and on because there are lots of, there's lots of money coming in to our school system. But here's, here's what you need to understand. When people give you money, they attach strings to the money, and with that, we can only spend the money on what the strings tell us to. If we want to change, and we can change, we can change how we want to spend the money. We have to write permission and amendment to the grant itself. That takes time. We were just talking about the data today because we're trying to look at how we can save some money and pay bus drivers to take remedial kids home at the end of the school day. That's something we could do. That's covered under one of these, but we want to be sure that we're working with kids after school. So we've looked at lots of different ways, from, you know, PPE requests to putting in different air handlers so that air is filtered in schools. There are just lots of ways that we've done this. But you now, thanks to Jane, you now have line by line where we are and how we've spent the money, okay? You're so welcome. But you know what? It made me look. So, and that's great. We've talked about this, but, and I knew I could probably come and tell you when we did this. I said, why not bring you all the pages? Now, here's the one maybe disappointment in giving this to you, is, you know, I could ask you how you've spent your money and how much you got, okay? But the disappointment is, I wonder if there's any duplication? And would there be ways that we could have worked together to spend some of our money to help everybody? And there may have been some, you know, we could buy volume discounts because we're purchasing all this stuff if we did those sorts of things together. So that's the other piece of this that you caused me to think about, Jane. But there's still some dollars here that we may want to sit down at some point and look at how you're spending your money, how we're spending ours. A lot of ours is specifically to kids, but at the same time, we, there may be some cost savings there. And it just caused me to think about that. So thank you, Jane. Insurance meeting. You know, budget times are coming, and so I'm thinking that before I leave, and by the way, I'm leaving at the end of December, here for three months, and I hope to have budget processes in place. What that means for me is that I have the needs of the school system by building. We've looked at those, but also there are multiple meetings between the school board and the board supervisors, so there are no, really no surprises. So information is power, and this is our first point of information, that our insurance carrier is coming to give us an update on October 27th. And I went to Jerry and I said, you know, this might be a good time for you to bring two board members and for me to bring two board members. So everybody's hearing the same thing. We're not going to have filters, but not that we would ever filter information to you all, but just that you kind of need to know what's going on, what our history looks like, and it will help us as we move forward. I think the more communication we have before budget happens, it'll be all right. It really will be all right. Okay. So the last one, and certainly not least, you're probably looking at this wonderful picture of school board members and Meadows of Dan Elementary. You know, it's not often in a superintendent's career, and I was a superintendent for 20 years, that you get a ribbon school because that, by the federal government, is a hallmark that is hard to achieve. Meadows of Dan did it. And they will be going to Washington, D.C. and being recognized there. But one of the things, and the reason you see the hats, I went to a celebration at Meadows of Dan, and all the kids wore hats and crazy hats and stuff like that. The board, for the most part, did not know what was about to hit them this night because I brought a bag full of hats, and I said, in keeping with everyone else, I have a hat for you. So you can see, the hats are a little bit different, just a little different. They're not your run-of-the-mill hats, particularly if you look to the far right, that is the music teacher from Meadows of Dan, and she likes to have fun. Can you tell? So that's my report. I'm happy to answer. One of the things I hope you'll do is, you can ask me any question publicly, just now I've only been on the job a lot of days. I would be happy to answer those. If you have questions in the, between meetings, and I hope I can come back in November, I really want to be responsive. If you have questions about anything that's happening in the school session, call me, write me, email me, visit me, because the communication piece, we're small enough that it's, it's very, it's critical. Just ask Jerry, how many times? 11 days, and I think I've been to see you three or four times, just walking over because I'll get something in my brain, and I'm a little hyperactive sometimes, and I'll say, I got to go talk to Jerry. I got to go see you. And she's been gracious enough to be with me, even when it's with a board member. And then I get harassed.
We're so hard to deal with, huh?
Yeah. Questions?
Well, right now, stay where you're at, okay?
Okay. She's with a gavel.
I'm going to open a public hearing. The Pappy County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing Monday, October 18th, 2021, to amend the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget to include additional Pappy County Public School receipts totaling $7,000. Can't get it all right.
It's a big number.
Yeah, it's a big number.
Did you know that's what they're paying me?
Yes. Oh, I understood that.
All of you, the superintendent, Marzil. Yeah.
Composites of CARES 1 Fund, RIGER Funds, CARES 2 Funds, C-R-R-S Funds, APRA Funds, and ARPA Funds for Special Education. A public hearing is required since the amount received is greater than 1% of the total budget. The hearing will begin at 6:15 in boardroom in Pappy County Public Building, 106th room. I've opened it, and I told you to stay there. I do not have anyone that signed up for the public hearing on the school. Now, I will close.
I have a comment, Pastor. I have one.
Well...
Is it too late to amend the budget?
No.
Appropriation for my salary?
No.
That's the school board's business.
But now, now's the time that you will have a comment.
Okay. I just wanted to commend the school system, school board, for coming up with this extra money when it would go into the budget. It looks like there might be some severe problems in coming year, and it's very pleasing that we've been able, you have been able to come up with the extra money. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Martin, for this report. I only asked for it this morning, so you did real good. I appreciate it.
I had it at 2:00, but by the time I got to where you live and back here, we would have crossed the line.
This time.
Commend you. Thank you so much, and congratulations to Meadows of Dan and Montris School.
Oh, wow.
And all the schools with their great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, for all this information and everything you've done this time and the other time.
Thank you. Do you all want your tests now?
I think we may or not. You will go sit in the witness box and listen.
See, now, see, I've only been up here for 20 minutes, and already Ms. Harris is pointing her finger at me right now.
But I do thank you, and you remember, you didn't get lost when you came to see me last year, two years ago. I still live in the same location, and I've been glad to have talked with you, always school, anything. But I too would believe you're a decent person first.
So I'll enter county board's.
We need a motion, Ms. Hazelwood. I need a motion to approve this amendment.
I'm going to motion.
A motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions? Call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you very, very much. See you next month.
Thank you for all this information.
Right.
I'll see you soon. Okay. At this time... At this time, we'll open a public hearing on proposed ordinance for cigarette tax. No one has signed up. The Patrick County Board of Supervisors will hold a public hearing Monday, October 18th, 2021, at 6:30. In the 34th courtroom of Patrick County, veterans from all buildings located 106th Street, Rocker Street, and Stewart, Virginia, on the proposed cigarette tax, I pick C. 0.15% action must be taken for this meeting.
I will speak briefly back.
Then I'll close it.
Do you open it? And we have no public speech.
I'll close.
So I just wanted to thank the board for putting me on such a task and requesting allocation of cigarette tax and see how it would improve this county. And we have made our way through to public hearing, and we are asking for your support to move this forward tonight.
Ms. Starwell, comment?
Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for your research and continue providing information to the board in order for us to do this.
Mr. Kendrick?
Well, you know, I hate any kind of tax, but I'm glad that we can do something like this to get the tax base somewhere besides all on the real estate, take some of the pressure off. Thank you for everything you did on here.
I would just like to say thank you. I know it's something new in Virginia, so there were a lot of hoops. So I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. I know that this has been a long process, and you've had your attorneys to help you. Second, a tremendous process. We know that it's been a long process. It's something that's just come off of top of someone's hat today. So I'm going to need a motion.
I'll make that motion. That we set the cigarette tax at 15 cents. I guess that's per pack. Is that, okay, per pack?
I'll second that one. 10, 10 cents to go along with the town of Stewart. We just didn't want to exceed the 15 cents, but I think it would probably benefit us to go with the 10 cents.
Thank you.
I'll make my motion that it'll be 10 cents per pack of cigarettes.
I'll second that motion.
And this will go along with what the town of Stewart has reversed. Any questions? Call for a vote.
Aye.
Next. So the next item is under your new business, is the ordinance to oppose a tax on wheels and administration. It's going to a public hearing for November the 8th at 6:15, and I'll need a vote on this. If you'll recall, this came about during budget session. Ms. Sherry Hazel, clerk of the Southern Court, approached the board with this. So we are trying to, now that we do have our attorneys on board, and we're able to support us on getting the ordinance up for a public hearing. We would like for the board's blessing to forward with that on November the 8th.
I'll make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for the imposed tax on wheels and administration for November, maybe 8th, at 6:15 PM.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions on this? And this is just a public hearing. Or call to that.
The next item under new business, I have another request, the ordinance for collection of transient occupancy tax, to schedule a public hearing for November the 8th at 6:30 to amend the current ordinance that we have in place. The one recommended is an increase to the levy of 1%.
Questions? Call for, need a motion?
I'll make that motion. We schedule a public hearing to amend the transient occupancy tax ordinance for November 8th at 6:30 PM.
We'll have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions on that, this public hearing? Call for a vote.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is about dog tags. And Ms. Harris, your sister, inquiry from a citizen concerned with their suggestions to, and want to know how the board feels about that at this time. Your comments, concerns, or would you like to see things left the way that they are current?
Well, I sent each of you a copy of the email that I had received. That at the time I didn't receive.
I think Jane's there to talk to us.
I agree. I think there was some issues in the treasures office, Sandra, and I didn't understand all of it. But I think we need to table it and talk to you and to the people involved in this general.
I'm not aware of anything. I was forwarded the email, and everything that I read, she agreed with what our office was doing. We went to the light town tag. That seems to be working pretty great. Citizens seem to be happy with it. So I'm not really sure. I didn't totally understand exactly. She mentioned sending a bill to all citizens, which I don't think you want to do that because you don't want to send a bill to someone who doesn't have it all. But we do bill monthly. We're doing all of that, so my mother's kind of, it's not broken. I think it's going very well. Actually, the best it has in a long, long time is going great from the way it used to be. I would say it's perfect, but I think it's going very well.
Well, I expressed to him that I did not have an animal, and I didn't understand exactly. That's the reason I asked him to send the emails while I could forward it to him.
Is it like more of a comment towards the bed lady sex nations act that we actually sell in the county? So, and I can't address that, but she was interested all about how that works. But, you know, as far as the county tag, I haven't had any compensation for it. Or, you know, I said, for the most part, that's going really well.
I just, I just say, I think we should leave it as is, but that's my opinion.
That's mine, too.
And along those same comments, I think it was, we're going good, it's the county. It didn't score very well.
Do I need a motion on this? Next. Mr. Quinn?
Yes, ma'am.
You have the floor, sir. Thank you.
I'm giving the speech you have. I can give it, sorry. They've always completed all of the segments. And there are some documents being circulated that have, tell you, I don't think you've got any. I think I may have seen it come across my desk by the time I left today. That's going to lay out what the funds are going to be, that actually going to be dispersed each of the counties that are involved. But we're almost there. So at this point, there's a resolution that we have to pass, I think, to say that we're anticipating. But frankly, I'm kind of a star, we're certainly not, not particularly now. So I would recommend to you that we pass the resolution.
Okay. Is that in the pack?
That may have been what came across my desk, that's what I think. Yeah, there it is.
I read many of them.
It's a full pack.
And it's a full pack.
It is, it is.
Yes, it is. You have any questions on that? Need to make a motion to approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion that we accept, or I'll move forward with the appeal with resolution authorization.
I'll second that motion.
Questions on it? Call for a vote.
Aye.
Next, under whole business, we have the bylaws reviewed by the attorneys for the PSA. And what we're asking for tonight from the board supervisors is that you do approve the bylaws as presented to you so that Mr. Vernon can then take the vote back to the PSA and get their approval as well.
You want to have any questions on that? I feel like your motion accepted PSA bylaws.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Make that motion, probably second. Call for a vote.
Aye.
Charis, advisory council.
Yes, so you have a copy of the bylaws with the tourism advisory council for your review. I think in talking with some of you today, there may be some other changes that you would like to see take place with those bylaws. Do you want to go ahead and speak to those? I had a couple of calls about that today.
Under Article One, Section One, membership, I just want to clarify because I know this has come up in the past. Where it says, "The membership of the council shall be composed of a board of directors made up of seven voting members," this follows. One member, one voting member from each magisterial district and two at-large voting members representing any magisterial district. Does that mean that the person representing that district has to reside or represent a business that is in that district? That's my question. It's Article One, on page one, section one. Yes, sir. Because that has been a question in the past, that there was a representative at a tourism industry business in a district, in a department, it would be beneficial to the tourism advisory council, but because they did not reside in that district, they could not be appointed.
You have to have five from the magisterial district.
I understand that.
And you have one of your two at-large, one of them, I think, is expected to.
But my question is, do they all have to reside in the county?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Do we need to clarify that?
Well, I mean, if it says, a voting member from each magisterial district and two at-large voting members representing any magisterial district.
Okay.
I think that answers it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we all understand.
I guess we could say any magisterial district in the county.
Okay. I have another section to ask about, but I guess it may be regarding personnel, so we may have to discuss it after executive session, maybe. About a portion in the bylaws about personnel.
Is that all you have on there?
Yes.
Anyone else have any question on? Seven to one.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Seven to one. Seven.
Proceeds in which they.
Are any of it. I didn't understand.
Should be there, shouldn't it?
Yes. You know, but we're supposed to have something else in there.
Oh, yeah, it does.
Mr. Phillips? I would like to hear the motion to accept it with those questions.
I'd like to wait until after and think of a solution.
Like to come out.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, the planning commission?
Yes, so these have been presented to you for your review. This is something that had come up before. Some of the board members were wanting to look at putting in place bylaws for our planning commission. And with former attorneys, you didn't see that we needed to have those. So because I was asked by board members yet again, I decided to reach out to the attorney and have them to draft and set up the bylaws for our planning commission. I think it would behoove them to have their roles set up to help guide them, as bylaws do. I think it's worth everyone reviewing. We can revisit it November the 8th if we can.
I think you all want the planning commission members, look at it. Do anything with it.
Absolutely. But we're not going to take any action on it until November the 8th, if the board even so chooses to do that at that time. Only by request by the board, maybe some of the board members. And of course, I want all of you to be privy to that against the reason I asked the attorney to go ahead and draft those for us. We'll revisit on November the 8th. Jane, would you be willing to take that copy to the planning commission members tomorrow? Tomorrow afternoon, I guess. You guys are starting early.
Good, tomorrow afternoon.
Perfect. Thank you so much. We'll revisit again on the 8th of November. I wanted to take you back a little bit to the dog park. Dr. Hable has come out and spoken to the board with regard to potentially the county maybe having an acre of land that they could utilize for the dog park near the Bay River rail trail. What we did was, we looked to see what kind of land might be available to us. Some of the parcels that we do have maybe could use for that. However, I feel like some of that property could be, you know, used, future use, maybe even developed. So I just wanted to come back to the board and let you know that we did look at some parcels, but I think you may want to look a little bit further at potential future development before you make said land donation. And I'll, for, for you guys to share your comments with me. I was just doing my due diligence following that path with the board.
Excuse me, looking at that map, back in my memory, I do remember something. I don't know whether Mr. Kendrick does or not, that that was a potential site for, the development. And I don't think we need to go near that or mess with anything that, that could be potential revenue to the town. And not anything against the dog park. However, we just need to look elsewhere. But I, way back in my memory, I remember something. And if Clayton remembers, it bound to be there.
That's right.
I think that needs to.
Yeah, dog park could be a good thing, but I just think we need to find somewhere else.
But you did do your due diligence and get the three super tax mapping to show what we did have. And we'll need to table that. Wait.
Next up, I have just a friendly reminder of the AECO conference, which is upcoming November the 14th through the 16th. We're looking forward to attending that. Now I'm going to go directly into my administrator's report. AEP will be holding open houses on Wednesday, October 20th, from 3 to 7, Stewart Road and Delco Building. Also, Thursday, October 21st, from 3 to 7, the Air Out Ruins and Club. We will also be hosting a link for the virtual open house to the county website. Probably as early as tomorrow, we'll get that up. So that if our citizens get lost in the way of AEP's website, they can come to our website, click on the link, and it should take them directly there. And they can share their comments and things on that website as well for the virtual open, if they can attend the ones that are open houses. We still have a lot of folks who aren't comfortable with going out to open forums. So hopefully that will give them a voice. We've also been invited to the Veterans Day Parade, which will be on November the 6th. Mr. Cox, he's called and reached out, and hopefully everyone can participate in that. And they'll set up at the parking lot here at J. St. County Administration Building.
I thought they said it was going over at Houston. I thought they said Tuesday night, and it would be at Stewart Park.
Any change?
That's where we line up at, and here.
They set up here at the.
The guest speaker.
They do, yes.
The guest speaker and the guests will be here with, right.
And the parade will start at two. Be here at one, but the parade will start at two o'clock.
At Stewart?
Yes. Another topic we need to discuss this evening is Halloween. The public is wanting to know, when are we celebrating Halloween, Saturday or Sunday this year? And this is a matter that's come before this board, or maybe not this board here particularly, but we've most certainly made that call before. What is the pleasure of the board, and we'll give that out to the citizens.
Well, I made my complaint. I know they have something on Sunday. But I think we've always done it. If it's on Sunday, we've always recommended that the churches and things do it on a Sunday. I guess with the church. That's just my, my personal opinion.
I agree with that.
Well, the Arat Rescue was doing theirs on Saturday.
I need a motion that will happen on Saturday.
You need a motion?
Yeah, I need a motion.
Make a motion that we celebrate trick-or-treat Halloween on Saturday versus Sunday.
Second.
All in favor? But please do show up for the...
Yeah.
I mean, we don't want to take anything away from what they have planned, but...
They're doing that?
Sunday.
Okay.
You have to go trick-or-treating two days.
It all begins.
Next item I have is health insurance meeting that Dr. Park has appointed to be October the twenty-seventh. We'll get back with the Health Insurance Committee. We'll need to attend that meeting. We'll get you time for that, because I'm not sure the exact time. And then I need to schedule an ARPA committee meeting on November the fourth, which is the Thursday. For those who are on the ARPA committee, please check your calendars. If that date works for you, we'll go ahead and get that scheduled. If not, give me another date after November fourth.
That's fine. What time?
We do a ten thirty a.m.?
Yeah.
Ms. Starwell, can you do...
I can't do Thursday. I can't do Thursday. I can do Monday the first or Friday the fifth.
Can you do Friday the fifth?
Friday.
Friday the fifth is...
At what time, Jerry? I'm sorry.
Ten thirty in the morning. Can you do two thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
And then just a couple of things here that I've been doing in the last couple of weeks, personnel community meetings. We've been quite a bit with interviews as personnel community knows. Also, I've met with Lopenta, which is our website project designer and manager. We are their new project manager. So please bear with us. I appreciate your patience on that. It's gonna be a great website once we get it all taken care of, but we've had some setbacks with it and hope to get it done by the December of this year, not sooner. And again, I apologize for taking so long. We have executed no use for the CBG, CB nineteen grant, who were approved for the second phase of the CBG planning grant. I wanted to just make a quick moment, take a quick moment, and let the board know. I've been working along with Ms. Polk on this Wolf Creek Road issue that has happened in subdivision in our county. It's made it very difficult for the residents to... For our...
Will they run through it?
Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Okay. September twenty-fourth, I got an email from Tanya in Florida. I text D-Dot on nine twenty-seven. I received an answer on nine twenty-eight, which was no. And I received an email from Michelle in Harmonity on nine twenty-eight. I spoke to Ms. Hazelwood on nine twenty-nine. Ms. Hazelwood said she would see what FEMA or emergency management could do. I placed a call to Soul Conservation on nine twenty-nine. That was in West Piedmont, nine twenty-nine? No. USDA Rural Development, I didn't receive an answer on nine twenty-nine. Health Department Law School, nine twenty-nine, said no, but they're, they might be able to help with a loan through SERS. I called Phil Stanley. I have not heard back from Phil Stanley. I called Charles Poindexter. He couldn't find anything that would work with it. I talked to Ms. Hazelwood again on September third again. She said the family wouldn't be able to. She talked to Mark Hurna. She can also heard back from Virginia Emergency Management, and that was a no. I finally got in touch USDA Rural Development on ten five. That was a no. The Department of Social Services, I spoke to them. They didn't have anything either. I spoke to Mark Hurna regarding what kind of permits. He said there was none. I spoke to Ms. Hazelwood again on ten four, and she had received word from emergency management again, and they didn't have anything. And she was going to talk to Social Services maybe about a grant, but they didn't have a grant program either. Ms. Hazelwood's going to check with the disability people. I spoke to Ms. Terry about a GoFundMe. We made several calls between us. Ten six, I spoke to Ms. Hazelwood again. She called Morgan Rivers, and that got back. I think she's got back in touch, heard to say he's looking at some...
Yes.
... federal.
Yes.
I advised Ms. Terry on October the eighth that Hunter's Chapel Church had pledged a thousand dollars, the Arat Ruins had pledged a thousand dollars, and that we needed other churches and entities to do pledges. Ms. Terry is now waiting for an IRS number from Reynolds Homes, which she filed two weeks ago, so that she can set up an account and donations can be made in to help with this. And that's where me and Ms. Hazelwood are on this.
And that's the last item I had under my report. It's now time for the supervisor's report.
Ms. Starwell? I was unable to attend the Tourism Advisory Council meeting because I had to work, but I do have a copy of the minutes. I'll share some of the highlights. The meeting was held at Reynolds Homestead. Thank you for hosting that meeting. They had several presentations. They did go over one grant application for an event. Darrell Knike with Everwander presented a new logo campaign, Find Yourself Here, and he's created three different videos to increase visitor attendance. He stated that the, there is a one hundred and thirty-one percent increase in the tourism website visitation, so that's good news. Also, they received an eight thousand dollar grant. Those funds will be utilized for implementing trail signage, map creation, printing, trail bench, kiosks, and changing station. The visitor center had a hundred and sixty-four folks during the month of August. There is a new love work sign at the Metazivan Visitor Center, if you haven't been up there to see that. So the next meeting is scheduled for this Thursday night at six p.m. in Dominion Valley Park, so we urge the public to attend. West Piedmont Planning District has not had a meeting yet, so we have another one scheduled next month.
I didn't have anything to translate.
Oh, okay. I escorted Ms. Harris to the official opening of fifty-eight, the project. He tried to push me out of the way for the picture. I was thinking about hanging there. But it was very nice to see the official opening, thank you, board. Hope to see the work getting going soon. Doing a lot with personnel. That's really been the key town consumer. Supposed to meet this week with Social Services in San Antonio. I'm on a committee with NACO, Rural Counties, and so they're sending me all kinds of information. I'm trying to dig through it for something that might help us.
The Planning Commission met on October the thirteenth. That was our second public hearing regarding goals and objectives for the comprehensive five-year plan. We will meet again on October the nineteenth for a planning session at one o'clock with West Piedmont at a regular meeting at five o'clock p.m. in the County Administration Building. Recreation Committee now on October the fourteenth. We met with the coaches of the football, discussed rules and keeping the children safe and not having big kids and little kids all jumping on each other. The first game will be on the thirtieth. Discussed playing football, discussed basketball. Hopefully, that will start the first of November. We received park reports, and Mr. Chrisman wanted to especially thank the Sheriff's Department for the trustees and the work they have done this year, which saved sixty-six thousand dollars. The nine-one-one committee meeting will be on October the twentieth at six p.m. in the Training Center.
Seems like I had a slow, uh, step. I missed that because I sat down and waited for time to go, and I fell asleep. That's just my excuse. It was just, I've been battling some issues. I did go to the EMS meeting. It was very informative. All our rescue squads are being inspected this month of October, so they've been getting ready. I will say that Station Eight pastors with lime colors, he said, it was just, it was awesome. So then the fire and rescue meeting, I went to that. Was not a lot of discussion. They're waiting anxiously for some developments from the Board of Supervisors. And again, Dr. Phillips and I escorted each other up the mountain. I've had a very good time. It was a beautiful, beautiful D-Dot, and Cameron had done a great job fixing the park. I think not been there lately. Before it gets replaced again, you need to go to Creek Cliff and Park. It was a very impressive, groundbreaking. We're just glad that we got that ahead. I was told that it was sand, but no, it was ice and glass, so I was pumped. But it was very, the thunder was very... Or talk to us in Patrick County. And very... Everybody was very nice from D-Dot all the way down. So I think that's my report.
So Madam Chair, just to have one other item that I need to discuss with the board. I brought a handout for you this evening to excuse. It was a request that you come through to the county for a capital fund. You do have that before you. We have some concerns about the request itself. It don't really fall under capital items. One of the items in particular, we believe, does fall under that. I do. It's the second item in the list. And what I would like to propose to the board tonight, we have done some research to see if there were ever any guidelines put into place for the requesting of these funds. And my understanding was, it happened in the late nineteen, I guess, nineties. We did a lot of research and weren't able to find anything in the minutes to say either way, but it was, the intended purpose was for the purchase of fire trucks and rescue ambulances and things of that nature, true capital items. And over time, I think we, based on the fact that we maybe didn't have those guidelines in place, folks may not understand exactly what a capital item means to the county. And I think that may be where we are with the request. So my, my question to the board is, one, would you be willing to take a look at some guidelines? We put those together for your approval on November the eighth. We could do that. And then as far as the request that you have before you, again, my recommendation is to pay the second portion of that. I think that should, we've done that in the past. I did go back and have Lori to do some research on that and on, and we, we did actually pay for one of those striker, Lucas-type items. And I think we should go ahead and take care of that claim this evening.
Well, have you turned the input?
We have it. You have it before you. But I'm not, I'm not real comfortable with the other requests. And I don't let the board weigh in on that, too. I, I just don't see those items as happening before you as capital items. I just, I, I just don't see that. But definitely the second portion of the request, which is the large request, which understandably so, what it is. What's the pleasure of the board tonight?
I know we approved buildings.
Yes, ma'am.
But that's big capital improvement.
Yes.
But you have to get your approval before you start it.
Right.
Is that not a requirement that they get approval before these things are ordered and paid for?
We, we would like to set some guidelines...
Okay.
For all of our folks to be able to say sometimes that the money's not available all at one time for a purchase. We just want to set forth, you know, that set of guidelines so that everybody will understand when to request, how to request.
And we actually can request. What we have had proposed is, if it's not an ambulance or a building, they have asked that we, you know, like other weddings...
Right. Which don't fall under, right?
We've paid for, no, we've paid for receiving anything to run a car...
Like a striker or a loan system.
Anything for an ambulance.
That would help with fire, you know?
You know, we paid for doing some work to existing buildings...
Which house those then vehicles...
Right. Which falls under that, absolutely.
Want to be safe.
Sure.
AEP monitors is what I'm trying. They run somewhere, we, obviously, thirty-seven, I was gonna say between thirty and forty thousand dollars each.
I, I agree. I, I agree with Ms. Hazelwood. I think this first one doesn't fall under capital funds. But the second one does. Yeah, absolutely. I agree.
So will we, could the board please make a motion to approve the second item as presented in the request? And then we will have some guidelines for your approval on November the eighth.
I'll make that a motion that we pay for the striker.
For the Lucas.
Yes.
Lucas is a CBR device.
I was looking under the striker. That's what I was looking at, the striker, so. But yes, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion, properly second. Call for vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. I think that concludes the recitation. I need a motion. Then we're going to the closing session.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, that we enter a closed meeting pursuant to Section two point two, three, seven, one of the COVID cases.
Yes, ma'am.
To discuss the appointment, I specifically appointing to the Board of the Department of Social Services to represent Dan River, the Board of the Public Services Department to represent Mano at Smith River, and the Economic Development Authority at Large Cornice for a four-year term, from August twenty twenty-one, pursuant to Section, subsection A one, and to your discussion regarding several new hires pursuant to subsection A one, and three, discussion of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and a discussion of the terms of such contract for a discussion in open session with adversely affected bargaining positions or negotiating strategy of a board of supervisors regarding the Child Advent Center, pursuant to subsection A twenty-nine.
I'll second that motion.
Call for vote.
Aye.
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 We're going to a closing session.